Same time, we'll start that.
That's it, sir.
See what you guys experienced. Was it view different back there at all?
Yeah, especially in the beginning, it's like really hard.
I believe. I've never said.
You do something.
That's it.
Probably.
He's like, I'm very concerned.
We keep it always. And the city probably.
I'm here.
They have more than that. I think that's our. Maybe not. Figure it out. It's our prime. So. So you know. I'm just, yeah. Uh, do you? I'll give her the same. Uh, I didn't have it. Intervene in 2011. All right, you don't care, right? Let's see what we're doing on the project. Says this. And he says, he doesn't have for women. It's exciting to do now. We're not even.
We're going to bring this meeting to order. Tonight, this is a joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors and the Planning Commission. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance and flag, followed by a moment of silence.
And allegiance is to the right of the United States of America, the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Hello? Thank you. At any time tonight, if anyone cannot hear me, please let me know. Uh, we obviously have a quorum tonight. The only question I have is Francois, are you here virtually? Thank you very much. So everyone in. Peter. Is not here at this time. I strongly suspect he will show up. Be better.
All right.
Again, an approval of the agenda for tonight. Any changes, suggested changes? If not, can I get a motion to approve? Got a first and a second? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, that's. Okay. Uh, review of the minutes on November the 4th. Any questions, comments? Suggested changes, whatever. They look okay to me. Uh, if nobody has any comments, can I get a motion? To approve the minutes? On the November 4th, 2020 meeting? Got it first?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Thank you. We only have one case on the agenda for tonight. That is case number SU-01-21-1. It's requested by Mr. Richard Dwyer. Uh, for an indefinite special use permit to develop an apartment house in an existing structure. Subject parcel is zone B1, which is business. And in District B1 apartments are allowable only by special use permit. The existing structure is a single family dwelling containing roughly 2,700 square feet. The applicant intends to develop four single bedroom apartments in the said structure. The subject parcel is three acres in area and is identified on the Madison County tax map as 40-104F. Property's postal address is 1355 North Seminole Trail, Madison, Virginia, 22727. Planning Commission members don't have a lot of questions about this. That's because we reviewed it in depth at our last workshop meeting. Um, we will go from there. Mr. Webb, do you have anything to add?
No, I'll, it's pretty straightforward. I think the two items, uh, as I said in my recommendation, I think the two items, one is, as I left the letter, uh, Mr. Dwyer has the soil consultant has confirmed that a four bedroom perk is achievable on the site. Uh, this will be the basis of the construction permit at, uh, the Health Department, uh, to design the system. Um, the other thing's got a, the other item, which is the entrance, has a few more moving parts. Uh, we have talked to VDOT. Um, I talked to Mr. Um, Lee Baines from Hencham Baines Engineering today. Uh, VDOT wants us, basically an engineer's opinion on the traffic counts and uh, when it comes to engineering, traffic is always a little bit of a, uh, I always kind of call it a little bit of a voodoo science because it's sometimes hard to predict, um, total traffic generation. There are some certain standards that are used. Um, I mean, it's, it's possible in this house, a family, you know, a single family, if they had, you know, multiple children or whatever, could generate more trips in a day than four single people and, and, you know, you know, you know, six hundred square foot apartment or whatever. So, um, there are some options and, uh, you know, Mr. Baines seems to think the low grade, low volume commercial entrance would probably be appropriate. Uh, but at this point, uh, the, and as I said in the email, a, a single family home, the standard that the IT Institute of Traffic Engineers utilize for a single family home is usually 10 trips a day. Uh, and that's a number that I've used for, you know, years. Um, and the number that generally for apartment or a, you know, a townhouse is six. And you can see that puts you a little under 50. Um, so I, I guess what I would request is that if the commission is, is inclined to approve this is just simply, make this a, uh, an approval based on, you know, getting, uh, VDOT's going to have to approve the entrance. Uh, we're going to have to work with engineer staff to make sure that VDOT is, is happy with what's approved. Um, and I just made the, kind of made the, the comment in the, in the packet, you know, if he was going to put a Chick-fil-A there, we wouldn't even be here. I mean, you'd be by right. I mean, you know, restaurants, it's B, it's B1. So, but he still would not, Mr. Dwyer would not be able to get a building permit until we have a septic and we have an approval. Uh, so I think the focus of the planning commission and, and board to just be, is this use appropriate? Um, you know, I think it is. Um, and we're, you know, a little bit later, we're going to talk about housing. We just don't have much, so I, I think the, the more options we have for rentals, the better. And I, I think Mr. Dwyer's got a pretty good track record with this stuff. So I know whatever is there is going to be nice. I feel very confident in that. So any, any questions for me or?
Now, on the application itself, it doesn't specify whether this is a permanent or temporary special use permit. You say it's a indefinite.
Right.
The application did not say that, so it was normally what they do. I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, it is indefinite. I just think maybe part of the motion approved, I mean, if the motion is to approve, then just make, make that, you know, clear that it is indefinite.
And this proposed driveway, looking at the GIS website, serves six lots unless there's been another road added on there? No?
It, it serves the lot. It's, it's a little interesting situation because Mr. Dwyer's lot is where the entrance is for the adjoining property use his entrance. Um, and so to a certain degree, he's sort of burdened by someone else using, you know, that's clearly on his property. Now, they've been doing it for a while, so it could be a kind of what they call a prescriptive situation that they might have earned the right to use it. But I don't think it leaves them, uh, the adjacent property owner, if, if he wants to, I think he would be willing to, whatever he does, I believe he's going to expect if that, if that entrance is, is there, he's going to expect that they, the adjacent property owner contribute. Uh, and, uh, that really is not necessarily a county issue, uh, but I, I know that, you know, uh, if it were me personally, I, I, I don't want to approve something that someone else is going to use, you know, that uses, you know, but that's kind of for him to, to pursue and, um, uh, but regardless, BDOT has to approve the entrance before we can move forward with, with construction.
I suspect it won't be an issue. The house was built in 1900. And wherever they've been going for that many years, 100 years.
There's another entrance, um, potentially to that property. Uh, but, yeah, I mean, uh, I think the adjacent property that Jordan property has been using it for a while, but, um, you know, a, any issue that he has or any kind of agreement that he wants to make with the adjoining property is kind of a private agreement. And, uh, you know, they need to work that out, uh, if they're going to be cost sharing. But at, at the end of the day, we, we needed to prove VDOT entrance regardless of what agreement or disagreement they may have about the entrance. That's right. This, this, the, the, that, with this right here, that, um, that four, that fourplex. Yeah, so on page three, yeah, that's right. So, um, this is highlighted. It, it's right beside it. It's, it's that little lot and I have a picture of the, the fourplex. So it's right, it's right here.
Does that service road come all the way down to your property unless you want it?
It does touch the property.
Is, is, do you have an entrance off of that service road to your property?
This property.
That could probably solve all your VDOT problems.
If we can get that resolved with, it's something in the description that it's iffy if we can use them. But it does.
Okay, any questions? Let's, let's get this back in order here. Any more questions from Mr. Webb? If not, Mr. Dwyer, do you have anything specifically to add at this point? To what's already been said?
I mean, we're just working with the engineers on the, on the entrance and the property that adjoins at the other four units, it does have its own entrance further to the north. And it's also been site planned, the church, a church has bought the property adjoining their property. And there's been some kind of agreement that their driveway will come off of that entrance, commercial entrance. And the church is supposedly putting in commercial entrance. This information is coming from Lee Baines, which he works with the church on providing that entrance. The reason the people don't use that entrance in their apartment is you're running, you're running against the traffic and you basically have to make a U-turn on out on, on that. That's the reason they started using my entrance because you're making a 90 degree. I just never said.
Any other questions, Mr. Dwyer, from the Planning Commission? So this house was built in 1900, so I'm sure somewhere along the line it had an existing drain fill?
It does, and it has a.
A well?
As far as a well.
What kind of system?
It's a system.
Okay. All right.
It's sort of like old spring. And that's what it is. But we're proposing that build a new well.
Okay. But at this time, we do not have Health Department approval on the well?
I have a letter that where I had Suzanne Holden go out there and do soil work.
I saw that.
And it's all, it's ready to be perk approved, but we just didn't do it until we know we're moving forward. But it is perk.
Well, that, yeah, I'm holding concern about that. I'm just concerned about, with the Health Department, you've got to have a drain fill and a well approval on these. So it does have.
And that's from Suzanne. That will be from Suzanne.
But that's with a perk test.
But her application will go to the Health Department, that's how you get the permit.
Yeah, I mean, so, although, before you can get a bill permit, I mean, you can get a, a well, but a well's a little different than a, a drain fill. I mean, you drill down, you're going to find water. I mean, whether they go 100 feet or 800 feet, there's water there. So he'll have to have that, that goes to the department of, I think drinking water, is that in Gulf Pepper?
Well, no, that would go to the health.
Health Department, okay. Okay, there's sometimes it does go to the department drinking, but again, that's, you know, it's really, it's good to ask, but it's an administrative thing and it's, uh, you know, it's, it's really just a matter of getting a, a well driller out there to, to do it.
All right, yes, sir.
And the house, existing house right now is five minutes away.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Um, what you're doing here does fit in with the county's comprehensive plan and the need for additional housing without a doubt. So I'm sure that most people would be in favor of that. We just have to make sure that the process is followed according to the county's zoning ordinance. And, um, that's why I asked these questions. Now, uh, anybody else got any questions? I want to dominate the meeting here. All right.
I think we all agree that, that there's a need for this type of thing. It wasn't that long ago that it seems to me we decided as the board and with the board supervisors that we would not need granting special use permits without Health Department and VDOT necessary things. And again, not long ago, this is a cracking.
Yes.
I'm sure that's what we decided.
That's exactly what we were told. Um, Mr. Greg, would you like to chime in on that?
Briefly, um, we came up with that protocol because we found ourselves in the opposition having to suddenly lobby for incomplete applications.
Any better? Okay. Um, so we came up with this protocol just requiring, now remember what the Planning Commission does is somewhat different from what the Board of Supervisors does. The Planning Commission can choose to wait on all of those things, um, in terms of getting the official approval from the Health Department. Um, if I could, could I ask Mr. Dwyer a question in terms of when he thinks he might get this information? Absolutely.
Well, we, I mean, we're, we're in the process of doing it. Like I said, we had Suzanne go out and do the soil work.
Right.
And it's just a matter of her designing the, for the drain field and the proposed well. It's just paperwork that's basically ready to be submitted in. She just has to fill the paperwork out. It's not like we're guessing whether it works or it doesn't work.
Right.
She's saying it is perfect.
Right. Are you thinking this will be 10 days or 30 days or longer?
Well, we're in the process of moving forwards and just like the engineer, I've got the engineer coming to draw the house up for the building permits. But if this doesn't get approved, I'm going to tear the house down. Because it's a liability to me. It's getting, it's getting where we either got to fix it up or tear it down.
Right.
And then probably just won't sit there.
Well, I understand that, but the question is, based on your experience, which I know is considerable, how long do you think it will be before you?
I'm dealing with the government.
Understood. And in your, and in your, and in your dealings with the government, how long does this type of thing typically take?
If it wasn't for the coronavirus, we probably had it done within a week or so.
Okay.
I don't be truthful with you. We've got permits in Gulf Pepper that's dragged out for 60 days. I, I, it's in y'all's hands. It's theoretically in the government's hands, but then it's going to be approved.
Good. All right, thank you, Mr. Dwyer. Um, Mr. Moscow, based on that, I would, I believe that what the Planning Commission can do is make a recommendation. At the same time, I think it would behoove the Board of Supervisors to choose not to vote on this officially until we see where we are. When is our next meeting? Is it on the 16th? 12th? Is it possible you'll have this by the 12th or is that unrealistic?
There again, it depends on y'all's Health Department. I mean, I can have all my work turned in next week or by the end of this week, next week at the latest.
Yeah.
I can have everything turned in. I cannot tell you when it can be approved now. Y'all, the Gulf Pepper Health Department says 60 days up to 60 days before they can give you any kind of.
Okay.
So.
I understand.
I don't understand.
Yeah, I, I don't want to upset the process that maybe was here before existed, but just again, I just kind of remind you, if, if he was building something by right, it's the same process administratively. He, he has to have the approved, um, septic well in place before we give him a, a bill permit and an approved entrance. So one of the advantages, I think, and we, we offer, uh, to people, folks like Mr. Dwyer is that we have a pretty efficient, you know, we don't want to rush things, but we, we, we are able to have people come in and efficiently move them through the process. Uh, and if, if your concern is the, the, the well, uh, in, in the septic and the entrance, then simply just, if you're inclined to approve it, simply make that a condition. We know it's a special use permit. We all learned we can put conditions on special use permit. That is, that is a condition of the approval. Um, I, 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 I just, that's the way I would recommend, but again.
What you're proposing here to do, to put those apartment buildings in is a good thing, and I'm not trying, and we're not trying to delay that in any way. We're just trying to follow the proper process that we were instructed to follow several years ago. And that's my job to see that that is done also. Now, having said all of that, okay? Um, anybody else got any questions from the board, from the Planning Commission? Pete?
You know, I, I kind of agree with what Ligon says, you know, Ligon is the controlling factor here. He don't give him a building permit, he can't do anything. And if he don't do what he's supposed to do, Ligon sure ain't going to give it to him. And I understand what the code said. I clearly understand that. Understand what he says. Here's the power back here. We can, we can make a motion to move this forward and let the power back here decide what they think should happen.
Absolutely, I agree with that. All I'm trying to do is follow the protocol here that has been established in the past to make sure that we don't get chastised again down the road somewhere.
I don't think, I don't think the code, now, the company doesn't actually say, I don't think the code actually says it has to be in place for issues.
The code does not say that.
Right, it's just kind of, it's sort of an informal sort of process.
I have been told and we have been told on the Planning Commission, this is the process and procedure that we will follow. Okay? That's what we have been told and we were not told it was an administrative process. So, having said all of that, anybody like to move this thing along?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion in case number SU-01-21-1 be recommended to the Board of Supervisors for approval based on the fact that he must obtain Health and Highway approval before he gets his building permit.
I got a first, I got a first and a second. All in favor? Raise your right hand. Francois? Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Dwyer. Good luck with the project. Um, next on the agenda is, everybody good with that? Okay, next on the agenda is our FOI.
Mike.
Yeah. Okay, the Planning Commission is temporarily going to suspend its meeting in the Board of Supervisors.
All right, there we go. All right, Kevin's going to be called. Um, when are you building your pool down there at the American Way? Hi, you're on speakerphone, Kevin. We're just about to come in session. Very good. Um, like I said, the board supervisor back to session. Um, case number SU-01-21-1 requested by Richard Dwyer for an indefinite special use permit to develop an apartment house in the existing, in an existing structure. The subject parcel is zone B1 business and in District B1 apartments are allowable by special use permit. The existing structure, the existing structure is a single family dwelling containing roughly 2,700 square feet. The applicant intends to develop four single bedroom apartments in said structure. The subject parcel is three acres in area and is identified on Madison County tax map as 40-10 or 104F. The property's postal address is 1355 North Seminole Trail, Madison, Virginia, 22727. Ligon, anything to add on this?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Dwyer, anything to add? Any questions for either of these two individuals from the board? Um, to the public. Public, have any comment on this?
No, sir. I mean.
Yes, ma'am.
You would have to come back again.
You will have to come back again, Mr. Dwyer. Um, any other public comments? All right, um, back to the board. We did hear the discussion and appreciate it. Um, I personally think, I don't see any reason not to, I mean, if it's coming back to you just building permit, which we know he has to do to proceed, uh, I think Holden most. I'll be the right one.
And Mr. Chairman, remember the circumstances that led to our passing that. We wound up having, because we felt like we had committed, we wound up lobbying in Richmond.
Yes, sir.
Lots of other things that were really beyond what typically the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors are called upon to do because the board felt that it had already passed it. By passing it with some limitations or with contingencies on it, uh, the board does avoid that circumstance.
All right. The contingencies would be health and highway approval. I learned today that the landowner cannot approve for a well, or cannot apply for a well permit in Madison County. It has to be under the well driller's license. So, that's a lot of work. What do y'all want to?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, it looks like to me, Mr. Dwyer is trying to turn an eyesore into tax base. So, I move that we approve case number SU-01-21-1 contingent upon Health Department and B dot approval.
Second.
Motion's made in second. Further discussion? Here in all in favor, six bucks in eye. Kevin Motte, all right. Thank you very much, Mr. Dwyer. Back to you, Mike, for riveting FOIA training. And thank you to everybody coming for FOIA training. It's going to be great.
All right. Thank you, Clay. Next thing on our agenda is County Attorney Mr. Sean Gregg is going to vouch us with our FOIA training. Anybody wants to stick around for that? Mr. Gregg?
Thank you. I'll, I'll give a chance to leave. Y'all recall, I did this several years ago and based on some of the comments that I've got, I'm going to try to shorten what we do. One of the requirements, is there anybody on a public body who does not have a copy of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act? I put one on the various Planning Commission members chairs. Okay, we've got three people in the back. You're required to have a copy. And if there are other people who are not present and you know about it, you know who they are, just get them a copy or give them a copy of yours, but they will need to certify that they have a copy. I think most of you have endured this training before, so I will not get too deep into the weeds with regard to it. There was basically a PowerPoint that I found from the Virginia Freedom of Information Act Council. Does everybody have a copy of that?
I've got mine on my computer.
I think most of you know what Virginia's preference is and what the Freedom of Information Act Council preference is. If there is some doubt as to whether to produce a document or disclose records, the preference is to do so. If there is some question as to whether a meeting needs to be advertised and publicized, the tendency, preference is that it be advertised and publicized. There are some areas where things kind of present their own problems, as we all know. If you've got three people out for dinner who happen to be on the town council or on the Board of Supervisors or on the Planning Commission, they cannot talk about official business. If they do, that is actually, that is a violation of the Freedom of Information Act. So, if you find yourself in a position, you just need to be very careful about having any discussions of any nature, of any public business of any kind. Biggest issue with violations of the Freedom of Information Act, and we read headlines about it, you know, sometimes you'll see the violation is a hundred dollar fine and the attorney's fees that the locality or the county has to pay can be tens, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars. Virginia State Courts take violations of the Freedom of Information Act very seriously. The era where you could kind of get by and say, well, people are just being technical, that's simply no longer the law. Judges are enforcing it very strictly and it has cost some counties a fair amount of money. If you don't believe me, Google FOIA in Commonwealth of Virginia and courts and you'll see a number of cases that come up. The one thing I've learned from the cases is I'm not, I'm clearly not charging enough money as a private attorney because the attorney's fees that you see in some of these cases are pretty outlandish. And again, we want limited access to public records. We're being recorded tonight. This is publicized. You know, there is nothing we are doing, we should not be willing to do in open session. There are some exceptions to it and we're going to talk about those in a minute. As I did say, everybody is required to, who is on a public body, have a copy of these. Steve, do you have a copy of this? Let's, I encourage you to read it tonight. There are some exceptions to it. Constitutional officers do not have all of the meeting requirements that everyone else does. What we're really talking about tonight are the FOIA requirements for local elected officials other than constitutional officers. Are all records subject to the Freedom of Information Act? The answer to that question is no. Personal records, personnel records, those are not. Personnel files are not. There are specific exceptions to any discussions. These include, and some of you have been at meetings where you've seen that we have gone into private session or closed session. The reason for that is because we are discussing contract negotiation, prospective business that may be coming to the area, prospective terrorism. Those things are not done in a public setting and if you think about it, all of that makes sense. If you're negotiating with a competing county, the last thing you want is for that county to find out what you've offered to another business to come into the county, only to have you undercut by whatever they have done. Likewise, architectural plans, engineering plans, those types of things, they're part of the private contract negotiation process, those are likewise not required to be responded to. I'm going to start going through this and hitting the highlights of what I have marked. We talked about screen seven. The others that are of some interest, screen number 12, and I'm on the back of page two. If you get a request for public records, we have five days to respond. One response is we hand over the records. The second response is we need more time. And then the third is that if there is an objection, then we need to state what that objection is. Most of the time, the issue is the volume of records. We've been through this and most localities have been through it. A lot of times, gathering the records is very voluminous and people, after they learn what it is going to take and where to get all of the records, they may decide they don't want the records as they have requested them. Frequently what happens, and I encourage everybody who has to deal with one of these, and typically it's Mr. Hobbs from Madison County, reach out to the person and say, what is it you're really looking for? Because, you know, you're asking for 10,000 documents the way your request is written. On the other hand, if you can find out, or Mr. Hobbs can find out what it is they're actually looking for, it can make the process far more efficient. We do a better job of serving our constituents if we handle it this way and it also frees up a lot of time. We're not in a position where we have a full-time Freedom of Information Act officer. Believe it or not, there are counties in the states that have staffs who do nothing but Freedom of Information Act requests. Let's see, I'm going to, we've talked about what the responses are. If we do not respond in the five days, that in and of itself is considered to be a violation. So, if something comes in for, in the form of a FOIA request to any of you, don't wait until Monday to deal with it. If it comes in late in the afternoon, the clock starts ticking, you know, late Friday afternoon. Now, it is five business days, so functionally it is a week where you can do that. There are a couple of things that you don't have to do. If documents do not exist, you are not required to create any documents. There is nothing in the Freedom of Information Act that requires you to give interviews. If people have questions and you choose not to answer them, you are well within your rights to do that. Talking a little bit more, and I am on number 26 of the meeting. Seems kind of like a silly question until you think about it a little more carefully. If three or more are gathered, it is a meeting. Period. That has to be advertised. Minutes have to be kept. Minutes have to include the time, the date. If any votes are taken, there has to be a record of what the votes were. If you do not do those things, you are in violation. And if you're in violation, again, even if it doesn't cost anybody a penny, the attorney's fees that can be assessed against the county, which the county would have to pay, can become crippling in a, in a short amount of time. Meetings have to be advertised. We advertise them typically through our website. Special meetings, we've advertised. Many of you are familiar with the fact that we've had some technical problems with meetings where we've had to reschedule meetings. It's not the end of the world to have to do that. If you have to choose between delaying something and violating the Freedom of Information Act, it is always the right decision to delay whatever the meeting is, whether it's a hearing on a special use permit, a budgetary meeting, any of those things. If we have not been in compliance with the Freedom of Information Act, we need to reschedule or cancel the meeting and handle it at another time. In terms of where the notices are posted, the website, prominent public locations, that's typically the courthouse, and at the office of the clerk of the public body, that would be Mr. Hobbs's office. So, if you don't have anything to do and you're wondering if there's a meeting, you can just wander into Mr. Hobbs's office, although he doesn't have a coffee pot. That was humor, Jack. Yeah, that's the beauty of masks.
Look what you've done.
Yeah. One of the other things, and again, I'm on number 33, the agenda. Agendas have to be posted and, you know, the materials that are being furnished to the members of the public body are also to be made available. There's no requirement of, you know, item by item, those things. And the Freedom of Information Act does not deal with issues of parliamentary procedure. motions that go into a closed session, these are controlled by Virginia statute. Those of you who have been to public meetings have heard, you'll, and it's, you know, there's a specific designation of what is going to be discussed in the, in the closed session. Those are the only things that are discussed after the public body gets out of the closed session, they have to certify and they have to vote, that the only things that were discussed were the items pertaining to the closed session. The reason it is done that way, again, is to keep public bodies honest and to make sure that everybody knows that we are handling what we are supposed to handle. A question that comes up from time to time, and I am now on, you'll be delighted to know I am on screen 38, voting. You can take straw polls. That question comes up from time to time. Typically, I don't think it's a great idea to do that because the less that is done in public, the bigger the problem. There are no written or secret ballots. Yet the Board of Supervisors is going to vote on something or the Planning Commission is going to vote on something, the public is entitled to know what the vote is. So, that's why, and we had a vote earlier tonight where it was done by a show of hands and a voice vote for those people who are attending electronically, and likewise the Board of Supervisors did it that way. I point that out because so much of what is in the Freedom of Information Act, we are so used to doing because we do it all the time. And one of the goals of the Freedom of Information Act Council in the Commonwealth of Virginia is to make sure that these procedures become automatic. If they're automatic, then there's no question and people feel comfortable inquiring about what has happened. If it doesn't feel automatic, the concern is that the general public will not feel like those items are being handled appropriately. In other words, they may be intimidated from asking too many questions, so to speak. We've had a lot this last year with electronic meetings. Some of you were at some of the meetings and in fact, we have used, in fact, we used it tonight, you know, an electronic meeting when there is an emergency. For reasons I will never fathom, the Code of Virginia says that you can miss two meetings a year unless there's, I think, a doctor's excuse or something. The exception is when you're in a position, a state of emergency, as we are currently as a result of the COVID phenomenon. In this circumstance, we are not required because, you know, there is some concern of violating health protocols and those types of things. Madison County has been following those protocols. We have, as a result of this, we have people who attend meetings electronically now. That didn't happen, I don't believe, until this pandemic started. Let's see. The biggest question that comes up these days in terms, and believe it or not, there are groups of people who sit around and talk about this stuff. If you get invited to one of their parties, don't go. But one of the biggest issues is social media. And the biggest problem with social media is, and again, email. If you are communicating by email and you are communicating with everybody about government business, it is subject to a FOIA request. If there is a meeting, it is subject to a FOIA request. If you have, if you post something on Facebook and you get three answers from other people who are on your board, it is subject to FOIA and you have to produce those documents. One of the challenges for our IT people, and Bruce, I don't see, would probably not as head aggressive, oh, there is, would not have been aggressively, it's a nightmare to try to keep up with this. So, the best thing you can do if you're IT people is to make sure that you use the traditional channels. I believe most of you have a Madison County website or an email address. Strict your government business discussions to that. If you do that, it avoids having to chase these things down and, and even better, if somebody has a request, they can get their response quickly rather than having to sift through a lot of those things. So, I encourage those of you who use social media to discuss public business to consider confining it to your email channels. This is the real question, you know, what are willful and knowing violations? And this is, this is, from the county treasurer's perspective, I think this is the biggest problem. It is $500 to $2,000 civil penalty for the first violation. Subsequent penalties are between $2,000 and $5,000. And again, this is without any showing of actual damages. That's what we get dinged. And then the real problem is, you know, the attorney's fees are recoverable from that. Finally, and this I think goes back to the 1970s, you cannot destroy public records. If it's a public record, it's a public record. You do not have the authority to destroy it. If anything like that is done, it is, I think it's a felony, but I'm not absolutely certain of that. No, I'm sorry. It is, well, under federal law, there are some prohibitions, but under FOIA, it is a penalty of $100 per record. Record is defined very broadly. Basically, it's, if it's one page, it's one record. If you destroy 30 pages, it's $30. You've got the same problem with, you know, the recovery of the attorney's fees and those things. And then finally, and this, to my knowledge, this has not been a problem here and it is not a problem in most places. If you're in a closed meeting, you only discuss what you have gone into the closed meeting. You don't discuss anything else. If you need to come back out of the meeting to discuss something, you always have that prerogative, but you do not hope that you're going to get away with. Part of the reason that the Freedom of Information Act Council is so aggressive about this is because the fear has always been that government, when it has the opportunity, will conduct its business, you know, undercover of darkness, so to speak. That's not good government. It's not good for any of our localities. It's anti-democratic and there are substantial penalties that it can cause. Anyway, I- Anyway, I think based on the level of eyelids that I've probably spoken too much. I'm happy to entertain some questions and I may tell you, I will get back to you with an answer. Bye.
General question about, if we have a committee meeting and we're discussing the meeting after the past three days, and you can ask them all to ask everything, Bill, how detailed does the agenda need to be, the company needs to be able to discuss, does it have to be like how we normally put it?
Generally speaking, you list what the topic is. That's, that's all you need to do. Because you can't really predict what the minutes are going to be, you know, whenever you're preparing the agenda.
Your knowledge on has Madison County ever faced Freedom of Information Act two?
I believe so, I'm delighted to say, not since I've been county attorney. My understanding is that Mr. Shackelford handled at least two. And I know that they were fairly involved whenever he handled them. And it's nothing Mr. Shackelford or what previous boards did, it's just, you know, sometimes it's, you know, there's a different agenda. One of the things to remember, and this certainly isn't the case all the time, but the Freedom of Information Act is an effective weapon for a gadfly because it takes county time and county resources to respond to these things. And if you just like yanking your government's chain, the Freedom of Information Act is a pretty easy chain to tug. And I see our two reporters are kind of leaning, and I'm not talking about y'all, but, you know, that's, that's, that has been the case in a number of counties. Chances are, if you see a lot of Freedom of Information Act requests, there is some possibility that that's going to be followed by a lawsuit because they're trying to get the information, as they're entitled, you know, with regard to some government actions and taking the paper.
Basically, number three, I think this has been asked in answer, well, so three people from the planning commission show up at a party, we don't discuss anything, we okay?
That is correct.
That's all that's been asked.
Right. Okay. All right. My final remarks, take it seriously, remember, you're serving the public. And one of the ways we serve the public is letting the public know what we do. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Gregg. Gracie, I saw you nodding your head there a minute ago about some past cases at the...
Yeah, her cut, yeah, her cut is gone, man. And Bill Campbell pointed all of our emails, all of our emails.
All right, I remember that one. Oh, yeah. All right, moving on with our agenda for tonight, the next item on the agenda is broadband recommendations for Madison County. There have been a, there was one in-depth memorandum that was prepared by Peter and Francois, plus, there is another recommendation out there that Peter has prepared, which we have forwarded to the county. Now, everybody, I'm assuming, has read all of that stuff?
I haven't.
Yes. Do we need to go over that stuff again tonight, anyone? I think it's pretty clear as to where we stand on the lack of broadband service in Madison County and what perhaps we need to do to rectify that. Peter, would you like to lead off with any additional comments?
Yeah. Francois's is participating remotely. If you've read the memos, I understand you have. Basically, some weeks ago, Mike asked Francois to look into the issue of broadband in Madison County. Neither one of us is experts, we know a little bit more now than we did, we have talked to some experts, however. And basically, what we have discovered is that Madison County, compared to all of the neighboring counties, is well beyond the curve. There are federal funds available, there are funds available through the state, there is technical assistance available through the state. We are not taking advantage of that, all of our neighboring counties are. And we believe strongly, we being the Planning Commission, based on the workshop which we discussed, that this is something that should be rectified. And our proposal, which Mike signed on behalf of the Planning Commission, proposes the establishment of a formal Madison County Broadband III. Those of you who have been on the board for a while know that back in 2016, the Board of Supervisors authorized the creation of a Madison County Broadband Committee, consisted of about 20 people, some of whom had real technical expertise in this field, including the chairman, Rin Mavalli. They worked with a state-sponsored technical organization called Center for Innovative Technology and produced a report at the end of 2016 called the Path Forward Report, Path Forward with regard to broadband. And the first recommendation in that report after it reviewed the extensive survey that the committee, CIT, had joined to conduct, was that we issue RFPs, requests for proposals, to broadband providers and ISPs, Internet Service Providers, and see what kind of cooperative partnership arrangements we can stimulate. And I understand from Mr. Mavalli that that recommendation was not adopted by the board and that subsequently, the committee was rectified as panic. And that happened in 2017. At the same time, Albemarle County and Orange County went into action. And Francois, are you there?
The mic is muted.
Francois?
Issue. Oh, great. Will you discuss the activities of the Albemarle and Orange County Broadband Authorities?
All right, thank you very much. I think...
Let me go on just a little bit. Rattan, it's got a significant CARES Act award, and it is offered money. The sources of financing and technical assistance at the state level have been moved from the organization CIT, that I mentioned, and is now been moved and part of the thousand community development, which has several organizations that focus exclusively on broadband. One of them is an organization called BATI, B-A-T-I, which is Virginia Telecommunications Initiative. Another is Commonwealth Broadband Team, which is sort of the organizing force of the Virginia State effort. There's also a Commonwealth Broadband Coalition. And they provide both financing and technical assistance. In our longer memo, you saw the list of recommendations they've made as to how to get this sort of thing started. There were about 20 steps involved in that, one of which was the creation of a formal governmental broadband authority. The other development, which is really interesting, is at the federal level, where the FCC, Federal Communications Commission, has a fund called the Digital Opportunity Fund, which has some $20 billion in it. And it has just made a series of awards, which are very interesting and very pertinent to Madison County. One of those awards was to Elon Musk's organization, Starlink, which is putting up thousands of communication satellites. And they were funded to the tune of, I think, $886 million just in the last couple of months. And another organization called Canada, I believe it is, was funded to the tune of $2 billion. But the most interesting from Madison County's standpoint is that REC, apparently, and I say apparently because they've been very cagey, because the FCC has a quiet period after maybe some of these awards, although some of them, no. But it appears that REC got a very substantial grant to run fiber on its poles, which would be by far and away the best solution for Madison County. And I have talked to people at REC, and I think, I think we could develop a partnership with them if we had a formal organization that was moving this forward. So, just to sum it up, there are opportunities here for us to achieve two results. One is to extend a broadband authority throughout the county, broadband capacity, affordable, high-speed broadband, and cell phone, cell tower service throughout the county. And the other is to serve all of the tenant interests that broadband embraces. Education. Now, we have people, and we have actually taken some steps in this, as we, the school board, bought these mobile Wi-Fi devices called MiFi's. And that, that is a decent solution, but we can do much better than that. We haven't really done much besides that since 2017, when the broadband committee was disbanded. We have a trunk line along 29, but it only serves a few businesses and no homes. And it basically is a throughput thing for services beyond Madison County. We have a local organization that we have teamed with in the past, Madison Gigabyte, we have the Wi-Fi churches, we have a private fiber project going from downtown Madison out to Graves, Mountain Lodge, but that is for their customers. And not much has happened. Other counties that have all the, all the while are really moving ahead. So our proposal is that we get in the game, that we form a authority, and I have a motion...
Peter, before you go into that, let's get some additional comments from any of the other planning commissions. Okay. Any other comments from the planning commission?
I've got a question, maybe I'll see. The gentleman that got the grant that secured the old bank or whatever, what has he done? He got a grant.
I, I don't have any idea, but I don't know, I don't think that would impact what we're trying to do here.
Well, that's what he was doing, broadband.
I know, but... He didn't get it? Okay. Anybody else from the planning commission? Pete, were you finished? I'm sorry.
I can answer Pete's question.
Okay.
I think you're talking about Clint Fives, application which were supported in 2018. It was an application that went in 2019 and it was denied.
Okay. Any other comments from the planning commission? Ray?
Ray?
Yes, this is one of my pet projects for most of my adult life, actually, since there've been computers. And then on to this. I'm really, well, I guess if we do approve of an authority, one of the first things I would suggest doing is that we get involved with the school system. You know, we haven't interviewed, have y'all interviewed anybody yet from the school system?
We have not.
And also, I think that's really important. I also personally know very well the person who was responsible for Culpeper's involvement. I could get every bit of information that we need about just about anything, school system-wide and county-wide, that she would, could share with us. So, we have some expertise right there with what she's been through and where they are. So, we have some work that we can do, but I think we ought to make a strong partnership with the schools. And I think that somehow, I know that in part of the motion is going to be, or part of the recommendation is how we partner with various entities somewhere along the way. Well, I guess it would be in the defining the scope of its powers and then, which is really important. And then who we partner with, and I think it's really important that we use everybody in our small, little, tiny county that might have any interest at all in this to make sure it happens. And I really, really, still, how can we find out for sure about the REC clarification on using their poles and all that? I, I don't like going down this path too much until we know for sure that that's even a feasible idea, but there are many other things we can do.
It is feasible.
I mean, it's feasible, but can we do it with what Sean told us last time about the, I mean, how can we get past that with some point sitting here for five years waiting on?
That lawsuit will not take five years. Cases tend to move through the river.
Okay.
With some speed, the one limitation to that is that there have not been a lot of jury trials ever. Anybody that's asking for a trial by jury, that will necessarily.
REC does not think that's going to take long.
Okay.
Thank you, Ray.
That would be good. I mean, that's certainly a good option, but.
Okay. I would think that all of your comments, they're all good, but that would be addressed by an authority if the board decides to create one, and all those things would be addressed at that, at that point. But gotta get one step at a time here. Mr. Ollie, you had one more comment?
I've got a question. I assume you don't have a county grant right? Right grants. And so, I'm sure there's no taxpayer.
That would have to be addressed if they ever create an authority. Any other comments from the planning commission? If not, any members of the public have anything to say?
Well, the line goes, the fiber line goes from the Madison line, it went from Culpeper to Charlottesville. We had it put in, the line underground, and goes all the way to Syria. And then we took it and then hooked up, put it on pole, and then ran it to the lodge. And then we're hoping that we can get the tower, the tower people, Verizon and everything is trying to sell halves on the pole so that they can get money that way. So, but there is a fiber line that goes all the way to Syria. It took me 11 years to get it really hooked up, because Verizon didn't want to hook it up. Verizon put it down, and then we said, okay, we get AT&T to put it up, and they'll pay for it. Then Verizon took it and paid, paid for the line there, and then hooked it up at the lodge. And if you want to get on it at night, then you come to Syria and do like, we have a good parking lot there late at night, and Gigabyte has hooked it up for us and everything.
Thank you, Mr. Graves. Appreciate that. Sounds like you guys are on the right track. Any other comments from the public, planning commission, reporter from Rappahannock?
Just for clarification, Rappahannock County did not use CARES money for what they did. What they did is they didn't get into this until like October, November. So, the $300,000 or approximately whatever they had left, they put it into payroll for their sheriff's office and things like that, and then pulled the money that they had to the sheriff's office, salaries, and they're going to use that for the authority. It technically wasn't CARES money.
Thank you. Anybody else? Ray, Nan, sorry?
I think that there's a fiber optic cable buried along 231. And when I talked to Brian Gordon and Jack, they said typically there's an orange marker, and there is an orange marker at the corner of 231 and Duette Road. And the people at Blue Courts say that it runs in front of their house. So, they say that there's a line there, but it's not hooked up.
Something for an authority to work on. Anybody else? If not, can I get a motion? Mr. Webb?
Mr. Chairman, I move the planning commission recommend to the Board of Supervisors that it establish a formal Madison County broadband authority for the purposes of extending high-speed, affordable broadband, and cell phone service throughout the county, and taking advantage of financial and technical advisory resources that are available for this purpose. One or more members of the recommended authority should be a member of the Board of Supervisors. There are at least two alternative paths for implementing these recommendations. The first path is for the Board to create a short-term, three-member advisory committee to facilitate the establishment of a formal broadband authority by, one, defining the scope of the authority's powers; two, determining the optimal size of the authority; and, three, identifying county residents and officials with the requisite skills and experience to contribute effectively to the authority. The second path is for the Board to undertake these organizational tasks itself, rather than delegating them to a temporary committee.
All right, that's quite a lengthy motion. Hopefully, everyone could follow that.
It's motion three.
Okay. And then, can I? I got it first and a second. Any comments from the planning commission?
Would you say that the purpose of the authority, if you're what it's tasked on, instead of being given directly, that what it's tasked on, where do you get started?
No more telling them how to do it. We're going to establish a family, and they can't do that. I agree with that, but I don't know if they're going to have to do it.
Are you making a motion to amend the motion? Mr. Regler?
No, I asked a question.
Okay.
You might amend the motion if you can, but I just don't think it's right. Most tell the authority what their task might be. Let them decide what the task are, what's, what's the priority. And when they get in there and starts fiddling around and checking into things and all that, they find something that, that isn't working, and I say, and tie it down.
I agree. There are probably going to be several unknowns, and I think those might be able to work out once, if, if it's created by the board.
Just for clarification, Danny, I don't, I don't think I said that, that the task should be given to the authority. I agree with you that, once the authority was established, that the authority's order fine.
Thank you. Anybody else? If not, we got it first and a second. And I see a show of hands that would like to vote for this motion. One, two, three, four, five. All right, I think we have much, one, two, three, four, five, six. Think, I think we have majority. Okay, the motion carries.
Well, I think for the record, you have to ask who the nays are.
You got the nays, Nan? I'm sorry. Yeah, absolutely right.
Maybe someone's abstaining, but.
Nays?
They would be nays, because it's a reason I stated in the question I asked.
Okay.
I did, I'm going on. I think we went too far in the, in the verbiage. I just think that what we showed them is one authority, I think it kind of needs authority. We need broadband. We need cell towers, and people's, but anyway, we need that, but we don't need the whole verbiage is what I, I dare to.
Understood.
That's me also, I agree with them. There's no question about what. I'll be voting against the motion, not broadly.
Okay. You got that, Nan?
Yep.
Okay. Motion carries. Any other business tonight from anybody, an exhibition? We were going to, the last thing on the agenda was review discussion of the Rappahannock, Rapid Antiracial Housing Study, which I'm sure everybody has read. And everybody remembers when we did the comp plan. This looks very familiar. Some of the results and findings in here is what we discovered many, several years ago. Mr. Webb, would you like to comment on it?
I'll just say that this is probably, next to broadband housing, is the, you know, next sort of bread and butter issue that I think that, you know, county and people that make decisions probably need to think about. If you read the study, you know, what, to me, kind of jumps out is the median household sale, was it 300,000 in Madison? And then you look at the household income, you know, it kind of made that little chart, how much you would need for a down payment, and you can see it really doesn't, it really doesn't jive, sort of, with what, what folks make and what's affordable. I just look at rental properties, you know, New Zillow, and I'm always kind of curious what the market's doing. I guess my background in real estate and appraising kind of keeps me interested in these things. When it, I do believe it's kind of a quiet crisis in, in a lot of places, and it really in the last six months, I get people calling the office all the time, you know, with basically, you know, speculating, looking for property, what can they build? But, you know, it is, it's really almost every day I'm taking calls where it's really just kind of real estate advice. You know, I tell them it's not really part of my job, but I don't mind kind of helping people where I can. You know, my feeling is the only way really to, I've read housing studies, and I think on this particular study, the recommendations are, I mean, there's not really a lot of groundbreaking recommendations in there, but I've looked at housing studies, I've taken classes, everything, and I've never really seen anything that jumps out at me that, that's, oh, yeah, that's a great idea. The only way to really make housing more affordable is to have more housing. One of the things that, when I first came here, and I know we have this rule where you can do three, you know, if you have a six-acre lot, you can do two houses and a one. And I've always thought that was kind of odd, most places you have to subdivide or to put that second house. It's sort of one of these things that I've kind of gotten used to and I kind of like, that people have that option as long as they can assign, you know, the minimum acreage to each house. It's kind of innovative, but I think we could consider to go maybe a step further. And what I would maybe think the planning commission could look at, and it is a recommendation in this, is the affordable dwelling unit. And I actually talked to Mr. Dwyer about this. I believe Orange has, Orange County has something, and if he was correct, you can build a second home in any lot in, in Orange, provided, I guess you have to get a special use from it, and that the second home is so many percentage the size of the primary house. What maybe could be a solution, maybe a little innovative, maybe, maybe kind of a trend leader, is to think about, I'm just throwing a number out there. You have an acre and a half lot, I don't care what zoning district it is, you can put an accessory dwelling unit on the property, provided you get a special use from it, and it does not exceed a certain size. Another catch to it, it would be, you cannot use that as a short-term rental, because what's, what's happening is, oh, we'll put a second, we'll put a, you know, a granny suite or an in-law, whatever you're going to call it, but we'll just turn it into an Airbnb. Well, that doesn't really help the problem, that only makes the problem worse. So, you are increasing density, and that can be controversial, but I think it might be a way that you can provide places, and I've get people who call a lot, and pretty much they're asking, can they do this? And say, well, right now, you really can't. You're going to have to have that extra acreage or whatever to assign. I, I would maybe like to think that we could maybe develop, maybe kind of progressive forethinking ADU ordinance that folks on, maybe I'm just using acre and a half, if you own an acre and a half. Now, if you're in a subdivision and your covenants don't allow it, then that's, hey, you can't do it. But maybe consider putting for an accessory dwelling unit ordinance that doesn't allow people a short-term rental on those things. And of course, one of the questions was, how do you know people are short-term rentals? Well, you go on Airbnb and look and see if they're short-term rentals. I mean, Brian, Brian Daniel does that. That's how he collects the, makes sure people are paying trans- or OXPU tax. So, they, one of the work things we could do, if, if it's something that maybe is at least, at least open mind to talk about, is try to develop an accessory dwelling unit ordinance with specific conditions that, you know, that would allow folks to build certain sized dwellings on their property, and provided it is truly being used as a rental option or for a family member, or just maybe, you know, or, you know, a police officer or a teacher could use that. I, I think that would be a, I, I just have always thought the accessory dwelling unit is a good option, and we have a lot of space out there that's sort of underutilized, especially in rural areas, and it's, I think it can be done in a way that we still preserve rural kind of character, but just give people places to live. I don't think it's going to get any better. More people are going to telecommute, or we're going to see more people moving out to the rural areas for various reasons. And I just kind of want to get some sort of feedback with what was your thought about trying to think about moving toward maybe an ordinance that would allow for maybe kind of opening up to a certain degree, but at least giving people the option, do a special use permit to sort of increase some density and give more rental options.
Thank you. I understand what you're saying, and we have seen these issues for several years. I think perhaps we ought to consider discussing this a little further at our next workshop meeting, which is coming up on, I think, January the 20th. We want to get that on the agenda, we can talk about it and see if there's anything we can really do. The one thing out of this housing study that kind of jumped out at me is, and I think you brought it up, is the, is any of our requirements here in the county slowing us down or being a hindrance, so perhaps we ought to look into that. Anyhow, I suggest we put that on our agenda for the next meeting. Okay. Your comments?
Not right now.
Okay. That was the last thing on the agenda. Anything from the planning commission further? If not, yes, ma'am?
I saw in the paper about the bowling chance for a cell tower at the ridge.
Yes, that is for emergency communication, if I'm correct. I believe that's, it's being developed by NBNC, and that is a, I don't know if someone else knows, but I believe, I've been talking to Brian about it for several months now, so I believe it's related to the emergency communications tower.
Is any of that going to come before the planning commission and the board? Do you know?
What's, for that cell tower? I'm sorry. The cell tower? That will be coming before the board in the next few months.
All right. Anything else? Anything else?
I think the, the chairman, the vice chairman, Mr. Monster?
At the next workshop meeting, we will do that. We want officers at the next workshop meeting. Anybody else?
Why, Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we are ready to vote at the workshop?
We usually do. That's when, that's when the bylaws cause for that to take place.
That's what the bylaws say.
That's what the bylaws say. Okay, I got a motion to dismiss. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Thank you very much. The speeding is over.
Hold on one second. I want to show you, I appreciate the broadband work that y'all have done. I think all of us do. We talked about earlier this evening our goals and priorities moving forward. This is in our final, this is a draft, it will be modified. Number two, promote broadband deployment in Madison County. What we spoke about earlier was doing the development of a smaller committee with some board members, experts, of course, the schools, and then moving into the authority based on what that committee kind of talks about. That was the direction we talked about at 5:30 this afternoon. We appreciate the motion and all the work, we're probably going to tap back into it, but that's kind of where we see this going. We did a survey that I'm sure some of y'all answered back to. Broadband is clearly needed, especially right now with this pandemic. And we see it as an important deal. It will take a little bit of time. The question is, is what kind of funds? When the school bought the Wi-Fi on and all the Wi-Fi hotspots was sheriff's money. We did move that money over. And the schools did a great job in a very responsible way of getting those out to people. This is what we're going to be working on this upcoming year, y'all should know. Thank y'all very much.
We should show us number two, please.
I appreciate it.
Thanks, everyone.
We do have a closed session, I'll save you.
Ready? I move that the board convene in a closed session pursuant to Virginia code sections A 2.2-3711A7 for consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body, and B 2.2-3711A1 for discussion on the assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, discipline, or resignation of the county administrator and the county attorney.
What you made exactly, for the discussion, you're in the only favor, think of public say aye. Fine. I think it's on a change.
Did Kevin vote?
Yeah, Kevin voted aye. Hold on a second, y'all. You have a.